Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, August ninth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting to order. Mr. Lockwood, would you lead us in the invocation pledge, please?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening in beautiful New Kent County, guide us as we decide what works best for the citizens of our county, those that reside here, those that work here, those that play here. Guide us with wisdom, compassion, and justice as we work through the business of the county. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood.
Here.
Welcome, everyone, tonight here and at home watching. We have a pretty short agenda this evening. I'm gonna start with the consent agenda. Any members have any changes or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Tiller.
If there's no other discussion, I've moved to accept the consent agenda as presented to make it part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn. Aye. Next, we have a couple introductions and presentations. Rebecca, introduction of Assistant Director of Financial Services.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I'm extremely excited to let you all know that after three long years of searching, we have finally found the perfect candidate for the Assistant Director of Financial Services, Mei Ling Qiu. Mei Ling began her finance career at one of the big four public accounting firms, KPMG, in their Richmond office. During her five years with KPMG, she rose through the ranks from associate to senior associate, and then on to assistant manager. She performed financial statement audits, audits of internal controls, and other attestation services for varying industries, including local governments. Prior to joining our team at New Kent Financial Services, she worked for the Richmond City Public Schools in their Finance Operation Department, serving twenty-four thousand students representing the region's most diverse socioeconomic mix. While with Richmond Public Schools, she held various roles within the department, from financial reporting to budget and planning for the entire school district. As you all are aware, the current Assistant Director of Financial Services, Larry Clark, has gracious graciously agreed to stay on with us to help with the transition and training of Mei Ling. Although it breaks our hearts to not have Larry with us at some point, we couldn't have found a better candidate for the position. So that being said, please join me in welcoming Mei Ling to our New Kent County family. She already fits in seamlessly with our financial services team, and we couldn't be more excited to have her. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Next, we have a special presentation. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Tiller to present the...
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Is Mr. Martell here? Christopher, can you come up front? This is a proclamation for Christopher for becoming Eagle Scout, and I know that's a lot of work.
Thank you.
I had a son a while when I went through that process, and I know it's a lot. So I'll read this. Whereas Christopher Martell, member of the Boy Scout Troop Number Five Six Two of the Heart of Virginia Council, a twenty twenty-one...
A twenty twenty-one? Is that good? Okay. I can't hear myself. Graduate of New Kent High School and the son of Wayne and Karen Martell of New Kent County, is to be recognized by the Boy Scouts of America for successfully completing all requirements for scouting's highest rank. And whereas his friends, family, excuse me, and community have supported him on his attainment of this rank of Eagle Scout and recognize the faithful and steady path he has taken within the scouting organization, and whereas scouting has been an integral part of the New Kent County community for many years and a positive influence on our youth, and whereas we commend Christopher, who for his Eagle Scout project, performed a variety of improvements at the county's Quentin Park, including installing two concrete cornhole courts, and whereas Christopher is committed to the ideals and creed of the Boy Scouts of America, has shown dedication in his pursuit in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Now therefore be proclaimed that the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, on this ninth day of August twenty twenty-one, does hereby recognize and congratulate Christopher Martell, Eagle Scout, for his outstanding accomplishments, extends to him our deepest appreciation and for all of his hard work, and wishes him the best in all of his future endeavors. Signed Rodney Hathaway, County Administrator, and Thomas W. Evelyn, Chairman of the Board. Thank you. Do you have anything, sir? No?
Just thank you to all the members of New Kent County that helped. If you came and got your car washed on some of my fundraising days, thank you. And if you were there on any of my workdays, because I had quite a few. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, I would just like to congratulate you. It's been a while, but I know my oldest son was in there. Few years ahead of you getting Eagle Scouts, and I watched you work hard back then, and a special thanks to your parents as well, because I know they've been an integral part in helping you become Eagle Scouts and some other many Eagle Scouts throughout the years. I know Wayne's been very involved in scouts, so thank you for your commitment and dedication to all the kids in New Kent. All right. I'm gonna come back to the citizens' comments period. I want to do their residency administrators' report first.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Philip Frazier with VDOT. Obviously, Marshall's not here this evening. He had a prior engagement tonight. So this month, this past month, we received forty-four work orders, completed fifty-two of those are of new work orders and old work orders. Our primary mow cycle, we completed that back in early July, and then we recently just completed the secondary mow cycle. We're gonna start our third cycle of primary mowing at the end of August, August twenty-third, and then and then we'll finish up with the secondary, second secondary mow cycle kinda later in the fall. A maintenance, a large maintenance project that we're doing, I don't know if you wanna call it large or not, Henpeck Road, there's a spot where there's a, there's four twenty-four inch pipes. We're replacing those with four thirty-six inch pipes, so there's a detour right now. They started that today. The road is completely pulled out, and they're doing the subbase, building it up, probably start laying pipe tomorrow. Hopefully, we can get that opened up by the end of the week. Route sixty, so the mainline paving is complete. So now what they're doing is just some of the crossovers, adding shoulder stone, and then permanent striping, and then Route sixty should be done for this season. Let's see. We also have two forty-nine. You'll see a lot of patching out there on two forty-nine. That's in preparation for the latex resurfacing schedule that's coming through. That's supposed to start, I think, sometime in the second or third week. I guess we're already in the second week of August, so probably the third week of August. The Smart Scale Project, Route one fifty-five North Courthouse Road, that one was advertised back in June. We had bid lettings in July, and that is likely gonna be recommended for award to the low bidder, which was Alan Myers. So recommended for award, hasn't been awarded yet, but it did come in under the estimate, so that's good news. Other than that, we have a few studies. We have a corridor study on Route sixty, which I know Mr. Hathaway and Mr. Bailey have kinda had, been a part of the first meeting that we had. We'll have another one here in the next couple months, and hopefully that corridor study will be finished by, I think, the end of the year. We're gonna do the same thing for Route thirty, thirty-three in Eltham. That one has not kicked off yet. I think there's still some negotiating going on with with our our traffic engineering division and the consultant that we're using. And then the speed study on Route six-ten, that was one that we talked about back in, I think, May. The request was to delay that until the park was completed. That has since been completed, from what I understand, so I went ahead and initiated that speed study about three or four weeks ago. So other than that, I think that's that's all I have, and I'll be happy to field any kinda questions, concerns.
Ms. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Frazier, I missed, what did you say the work was gonna be done at Courthouse in Kentland?
One fifty-five? It's a it's a shoulder widening, so trench widening project where I think really the idea is to create a shared use path for bikes, and it's, I think it's a five or six mile project.
Okay.
So it's not one particular area, it's it's a full run. I can't remember what the actual, the to and from, but if you'd like, I can get that for you.
That's okay. Two weeks ago, I called Joe Terry. Last week, I called Marshall Nguyen.
Okay.
The mowing on Kentland Trail hasn't been done in two months, and this is peak season for horse racing. We have visitors from Florida to New Jersey. We have visitors here from California, and the first thing they see when they come into Kentland Trail is grass that's two feet high. When is that gonna be taken care of?
I actually don't know if Kentland, I can't speak to whether it's on our specialty mow.
It is on your specialty mower. It should be.
Then the specialty mow was, I believe, they got a notice to proceed last week, so they should be out there within the next week or so.
So they had to have skipped at least one mowing?
Uh...
Back in July or sometime, because it hasn't been mowed in two months.
Right. So I think we've done three notices to proceeds for specialty mow so far. I'm not sure when the last one was done for New, or for for Kentland Trail, but like I said, I know one was just put out, I think it was last Monday, so...
Well, if you would follow up on that, I'd appreciate it, because I'm getting a lot of complaints.
Sure.
And as far as the repaving on sixty, great job. Long overdue, great job. We appreciate it. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Tiller?
Just a few things. And you said the traffic study on Route sixty was two forty-nine included? Because I noticed the counters on Route two forty-nine last week as well. The little rubber strips that go across, cables?
Uh, no. Two forty-nine was not included as part of that corridor study.
Okay. All right. The entrance into the parking lot where the post office is in Bottoms Bridge.
Okay.
There's two entrances, one on the Fast Mart Inn, and then one almost directly in front of the post office. It's a rather large pothole there. I don't know if you would call it the apron, but I know the VDOT has fixed it in the past. Can you put that back on the list?
Yeah. Put it on the list.
To do that? And Laurel Road, which is off of...
Hopewell.
Hopewell Road. Thank you. Do I? No. It's off of Hopewell. Laurel? Yeah. Yeah, anyway. I had someone that was asking about VDOT, maybe giving them an idea of what they needed to do, or VDOT could, if they could upgrade it for VDOT to take over.
Oh, it's private road?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I mean? I, I agree. I mean, I think it's a shot in the dark for them, because I'm not sure how many people live on that road, but...
Have they, have they reached out to to VDOT?
I thought they had.
Okay.
But I'm asking now, so I don't know if they...
Well, do we, can we have, probably need a contact or something?
You can contact me.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Yep. We'll get with you.
All right.
And get the contact information for the folks that are looking to do that, but yeah, there's, I hate to say it, a laundry list of things that...
Oh, I know.
Folks have to do to...
I'd asked before.
I wrote up the current state standard, so...
Okay. But at least they'll know if they can or can't.
Right.
That's all I'm asking. And VDOT came through my neighborhood last week on Route twelve oh eight.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, they cut the trees back and up, which really opened up the road. Do you know if they finished with that project there?
Twelve oh eight was the only section that's gonna be done in that area this year.
Okay. All right. It looks really nice. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all, Mr. Evelyn.
Mr. Lockwood?
I did meet Jeff and Joe out at Carter Road a couple of weeks ago, when we had all that rain and a lot of flooding issues, and I know they were out there working on ditches and cleaning out pipes and all that stuff, so I wanna thank, thank you, Jeff, for kind of a spontaneous meeting. And I did send you and Joe an email also about Farmer's Drive. I gave you the address of the guy that, when we did all that ditch work out there, did a great job on Farmer's Drive, but apparently it created an opening where his yard is getting flooded now, probably because water never flowed through there before, so I don't know if you guys had a chance to stop by and take a look at that, but I know he would appreciate it, so would I. And I'll be in touch with Jeff. I've got a few other things for later, but thank you.
Okay. Ms. Page?
Good evening. A few things. One, twenty-two seventy New Kent Highway, they have a pipe that is basically buried, and so the water is not draining from the ditches running over his driveway, so he's repeatedly putting rocks at that pipe, but probably needs replacement, it's been there since, I don't know, the seventies. I have my usual, Oliver Church Road, no shoulders, crumbling shoulders, drainage problems. Cooks Mill Road, resurfacing, potholes, crumbling sides, drainage problems. Clock Road, bleeding gravel, drainage. Mount Pleasant at sixty, I hope that they have covered that. I was told that where the, when they were doing the surfacing on Route sixty, maybe it was an apron that was needed, or where they put a pipe in, it was a bump, and so people were having damage for that cause, because they didn't know that there was no bump sign up there. So I was told that that would be done when sixty was done. And then Oliver Church Road, if you exit Oliver Church at Route sixty, and you're looking down toward Williamsburg, the trees are out, so when you're entering sixty, you have to come out on the road, almost enter sixty to be able to see down sixty, so maybe if they could cut those back or trim those back. And the rest of my list, I'll just email it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that doesn't leave anything for my district for you to do, I don't think.
Let me do that. You said one-two-two-seven-zero, New Kent Highway?
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I wrote that right.
Well, I haven't had any complaints, but I did ask at the last meeting about Hingham Drive. I can't remember the route number. Was that pipe ever blown out? It was? I assume it was, because I never heard back from the guy. He did take, all right, so thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Evelyn, since that's all you have, can I have one more?
One.
Okay. On two forty-nine, east and west, on the passenger side, the road is crumbling. It's like the, almost like the weight of the vehicle is on the passenger side, but...
The logging trucks.
Huh?
The logging trucks.
Okay. What, I ain't said it. I don't know what's causing it. All I know is that on, that it's crumbling. You have, so you're driving, and it's like, you're like this, and I thought it was just on the westbound, but it's on both sides, and it's just in different areas, no particular area. I know at, in the stage road, where you enter two forty-nine, and you're coming down that hill, I know that it's there. I know the address I gave you is there. They did put asphalt in there to try to smooth it out, but if you ride two forty-nine, you're gonna be hitting it, and it's only on the passenger side that it looks like it's spider veins are crumbling, and it's on both sides.
Okay.
And that is really all I have, Mr. Evelyn. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming tonight.
Yep. You got it. Y'all have a good one.
All right. Go to the rest of your summer.
Thank you.
Next, citizens' comment period. Azul, can you bring a sign-up sheet?
During the comment period, I'll call your name. I'll ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and be given three minutes.
First, Jan Mary.
Hi, my name's Jan Mary. I live at one-three-five-oh-one Pocahontas Trail in Exeter. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Go, there's three minutes? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So after living all over the world, my military family and I chose to live in New Kent, and I also chose to work at Heritage Public Library. And we have a remarkable library. We just had a front page write-up in the Chronicle and the Tidewater Review. We recently won a statewide award from the Virginia Library Association, which recognizes the dedication and creativity of the entire library staff. We never shut for COVID. We provided much-needed internet access for our community, for work, for business, and for school, from kindergarten to college. We provided thousands of virtual programs and take-home craft kits. We earned tens of thousands of dollars in state and federal grants. Public libraries provide essential services that cannot be supplied privately. We provide far beyond the essentials, because we love our community and we want to serve our community through our library. All of the library staff, except the director, are part-time library assistants and technicians. Some staff members have dedicated themselves to community service through our library for over a decade, but still earn less than the median wage for a library assistant of thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents an hour. Many will not even meet the state's upcoming minimum wage of eleven dollars an hour. We all choose to take this pay, so I'm not whinging, I just want to point out the library staff's dedication in the face of deplorable circumstances. Last month, our library director was fired or forced to resign, and I am not sure which. It was with little input from anyone from New Kent, as far as I can tell. Another employee was hounded out earlier this year, and I can't help wondering if I'll be the next one to be hounded out. In addition, we all pay taxes to the state of Virginia, which, part of which, they return to public libraries all over the state. Heritage Public Library is county-funded below the threshold of getting full state aid, which means each of us taxpayers contribute more of our state tax money towards well-funded nearby libraries like Williamsburg or Henrico, which we are either not allowed to use or have to pay to use. As library employees, we have given our counties the best library we are capable of, and I believe our hard work shows. In return, we are disregarded and even attacked. I ask the New Kent Board of Supervisors and the citizens of New Kent to look deeply into what is happening at Heritage Public Library. So thank you. And for the Board of Supervisors members, I have more information than I, more than I could give in three minutes. So thank you very much. Yeah.
Do you have that information with you?
You want it right now?
Yeah, so you could give it to the clerk. Yep.
Can I comment?
There's one more person who wants to speak about a library, can let them speak, and then...
It was specific to Ms. Mary.
Oh, it was? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just wanted to recognize Ms. Mary for her being awarded as the twenty-twenty-one Librarian of the Year, so thank you for your service and congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Elizabeth DeZula?
Hi, Elizabeth DeZula, I live at one-eight-four-six-seven New Kent Highway, Barrensville, Virginia, two-three-zero-one-one. All right, members of the board, Mr. Administrator, I'm here as a taxpayer that is concerned with the direction of, that the Heritage Public Library Board of Trustees is taking with the regional library system that serves both New Kent and Charles City. On July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, they gave the then-executive director, Shonda McPherson, an ultimatum of resign, resign under protest, or be fired. Under the circumstances, at the time, she resigned under protest, but has since rescinded, and they were forced to fire her. I'm concerned that the situation was handled incorrectly, and her dismissal was unjust. Other specific concerns about the situation include, but are not limited to, Charles City County Government having representation at the meeting on July nineteenth, but not New Kent, information not being shared with the entire library board before or after the meeting on the nineteenth, not following the Board of Trustees bylaws, and library board members not following Heritage Public Library conflict of interest policy. To address these concerns individually, at the meeting on the nineteenth, Charles City had representation at, of the county administrator... at the meeting on the 19th, Charlestown City had representation of the county administrator's assistant, who was invited into the portion of the closed session when a personnel matter was being discussed. It is to my understanding that the whole library board was not made aware of the plan to get rid of Ms. McPherson, and were not even notified that it had happened until some started to inquire about the situation because they had heard about the situation through other sources. County governments, as well as the Charlestown City History Center volunteer, were all notified before the remaining library board members that were not in attendance on the 19th. It is, to the best of my knowledge, that the Board of Trustees' bylaws were not followed during the plan to remove Ms. McPherson from her position, specifically Article 7, dealing with committees. The Personnel Committee that was put together in January, that consisted of three library board members, never gave a full report to the library board, which is in violation of that Article 7. It is to my understanding that there is a library board member that is not following Heritage Public Library conflict of interest that states it is expected that all staff, volunteers, and board members scrupulously avoid any conflict of interest between the interests of Heritage Public Library and personal, professional, and business interests. This includes actual conflict of interest and perceived conflict of interest. I request that these concerns are investigated. And if I may, leave you with a quote from Andrew Carnegie, "A library outranks any other thing a community can do to benefit its people as a never-failing spring in the desert." Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. DeZula. I think this board is aware of what happened. We really didn't know until everything happened as well. I'm sure you know that. And she's hired by the library board, but we are having some, we're having staff look into it and just try to get us up to date of what happened, what we can do, and what options we do have. So we are aware of it, and we are looking into it. I can promise you that. Anybody else have anything? Anything like that? Thank you all for coming out. Brian Carroll?
How are you doing? My name is Brian Carroll. I live at 8040 North Courthouse Road, right here on 155, right from Rick's Deli. I talked to Ms. Page and Mr. Lockwood right before the meeting, got a little filled in on the info, but what I'm asking for is for the board's help. I used to drive a tractor trailer. I used to drive trucks. I know the rules behind them. The engine brakes, the jake brakes that they use, they're not even supposed to be used unless you're really on a mountain or a steep grade. They're there to help slow the truck down. I get that. But they don't need to be used in the county. That road right there, and we were just talking about log trucks and the damage they're doing. They probably shouldn't even be coming down that road anyway. There's other routes to get to that paper mill. But the log trucks and the sand trucks going back and forth to that sand pit are on that jake brake for the last half a mile going down that road. And it's got, lately it's gotten ridiculous. I mean, it's overbearing loud. And I just, I'd like some help with that. I know that there's counties all over the country that have put ordinances out there that they're not allowed to be used. Be nice to have some signs put up and that somewhat being enforced. I understand what you're talking about with the state, but you know, I'm old folk. I don't believe the state should be telling the county, you know, everything they're supposed to be doing. And the second thing, I'd like to request some help from Sheriff's Department if I could. That road seems to be a drag strip lately. When you turn there at Rick's Deli to go up towards the interstate, the cars going towards the interstate seem that think that's a racetrack. I've stood out there many times. I mean, they are as wide open and as fast as they can be going, probably a quarter mile past my house. That's not a drag strip. I've even talked to a couple of the deputies a few times while I've seen them and, you know, different areas and just asked them if they could go down there. I don't care if they park in my driveway. I couldn't care less. I'd just like everybody slowed down on that road. It's ridiculous for those cars to be going to there that fast. And some of these cars that have these loud exhaust systems and trucks, they're extremely loud when they come by. And I'd just like some help with it if I could.
Thank you. Ms. Page?
We talked before the meeting tomorrow. I'll be back. And so we can do a little speed watching and a little jake brake listening. You spoke with us about the issues that we were having at the Elkhorn area regarding the same things, speeding and jake braking. We've tried to reduce speed limits. We've jumped up and down. And so we're just going to continue to do it. I mean, and the sheriff is here, so he's heard your concerns regarding the speeding. And I'm quite sure that he's anxiously awaiting to do something about that. So thank you so much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Page.
Mr. Carroll, I just want to let you know, I do have a bunch of log trucks. And I completely agree with you. There's no reason these log trucks should be going up and down 249. But until the federal, I've met with Whitman and I've met with Spanberger, Republican and Democrat, and I tried to get some joint legislation passed. Spanberger's niece goes to New Kent schools. Her sister lives in Patriots Landing. And I sit on Virginia Log Association lobbyist group. And we're begging them to increase the weight limits. You can carry 90,000 pounds on these roads legally, but you can only carry 80,000 pounds on the interstates, which is a safer, wider road. So if you get pulled over on the interstate with 90,000 pounds, it's about a six or eight thousand, six to eight thousand dollar ticket that you can haul legally on this road. And that's why you see all the log trucks coming up and down 249. And I totally agree with you. I'd much rather have, I mean, my log trucks still do run up 64. That's the way I want them to go. But it makes no sense for a better highway like 64, because those trucks are going right over, passing 64 to come to 249, coming through the roundabouts. So I'm not disagreeing with you.
Couldn't they use Highway 30, the next exit up?
But they get on the interstate. So once you get on the interstate, they're coming from south of the river. They're coming up 106, staying on 106, going by the Loves, going by the Pilot. I see it traveled every day all the time. That's where they're coming from.
What do you mean you can't get on the interstate? There is not an exit up there to go towards West Point?
The problem is, if that truck's got 90,000 pounds and he gets caught, they're overweight. And you can carry more weight on the 249.
Sounds something to me if you don't want to keep tearing the roads up like she was just talking about, reduce the weight limit on the road. I mean, sounds something to me.
But you can't do that locally. Yeah. We are, I mean, I agree, we're working on it, but we're going to have to get some help on the federal and state side. Thank you for your input. Justin McMichael?
Hello, Justin McMichael, 13560 Cooksville Court. I'm here representing the Cooksville Homeowners Association. Members of the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak with you today. We, members of the Cooksville Homeowners Association and other residents of the west end of Cooksville Road, come before you today with a plea for assistance. And unironically not related to the VDOT stuff that we just talked about. Matter of fact, Supervisor Page already mentioned our road. West End of Cooksville Road, from Coverland Community Center down to New Kent Chapel, has been in a state of disrepair for about 10 months. And as of right now, we don't really have any sort of commitment on whether or not we'll actually even be, you know, taken care of and fixed this season. So we're really coming here in hope of just, you know, getting your avocation on our behalf to, you know, the next time VDOT's here, Supervisor Page, I'm sure you're going to be bringing it up again. But, you know, basically, we're in a situation where our road is worse than what it started at. So I'm just taking you back a little bit in time here. So the time is late October 2020, place west end of Cooksville Road. At this time, Dominion had been working on replacing some poles, so we were kind of used to construction, working around in that kind of stuff. And then one day, we noticed something different, you know. It seems that not only has the Dominion work wrapped up, the trucks and the people are gone, but the road was way different than, you know, when we left it in the morning or in the afternoon, as the case may be. So as many of you know, Cooksville Road is not really, it's not like the best maintained road in the world, right? It's not pristine, doesn't have to be. It's a secondary. We're pretty much okay with that, you know. It had some bumps, but like, if there was no opposing traffic, you could always go around it. It was a comfy road. It was manageable. But we just kind of look at it as just kind of part of the experience of living off the beaten path a little bit. But that day, what instead we were greeted with was a road that looked and felt like something I'd seen in a movie. So you remember the movie Cars, where Lightning McQueen, and he hook him up to Bessie, and he tries to get the road paved really quick, and it's all ridgy and jumbling and nasty and stuff, and it's worse than it's when he started with. That's kind of what we got. Now, that's hyperbole, right? I mean, it's not impassable, but it's worse than what it was when they started. So basically, you know, the idea is that we've been making attempts to kind of contact them. Several members of our homeowners association have reached out to VDOT, probably some of the folks that were here today. Supervisor Page has spoken on our behalf, but he's, as of right now, we don't have a commitment. We kind of have a, hey, we might be able to get it this season before the asphalt plant closes, but no commitment. And we've actually had people from the community that have called recently to VDOT and been told, no, there's nothing planned. And it's not, it's not in that plan, and, you know, and there was no answer to your query about it today either. So that's pretty much it. You know, we just kind of wanted to lay out the fact that pretty much the whole community, not just the homeowners association, but other people that live on the west end there, you know, we kind of got the shaft 10 months ago. The road was all right, and now it's like, this is a jumbling mess. You know, we'd like to have it corrected. That's it.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can. So on last week, I think I spoke to, I know I did, I spoke to one of the homeowners' president, I believe it is. And I wrote, actually wrote, Cooks Mill and District 3 with Jeff Olgood, who's the gentleman that was sitting in front of you. His commitment was, and of course, I shot him another email today, his commitment is they're going to come and fix the potholes, and then they're going to come back and they're going to do all the bush axle with the trees on the side of the road and grass cutting. And then they're going to come back and they're going to do the asphalt. Now, I can tell you, I watched them put it down there that morning. So they dumped it and they put it down with a motor grader, which is pretty okay. But they never came back to complete the road. And so when I asked them about it, they said, well, it's winter time and the plants are closed, so we'll be back. I am indeed a pain for them, and that's okay. But your end, the opposite end is just as bad. It is absolutely just as bad. And it's all the way down the Hill Farm Road that there are potholes, that the shoulders are crumbling, that the asphalt is put down unevenly with a motor grader, that the potholes, they get out and throw asphalt in it and jump up and down on it and say it's patched. So I'm not going to let it rest. And so you have my card and you'll send me an email. So we'll be in constant email and I'll copy on the emails to VDOT. And thank you for being here.
Thank you. Next item is Rabahana Community College Update. President, Dr. Shannon Kennedy? He's not here. All right. Next item is Connect RVA 2045 Transportation Plan Presentation. Mr. Parsons? With Plan RVA. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. All right, we'll make this work. So my name's Chad Parsons. I'm the Director of Transportation of Plan RVA. And I'm with you here this evening to talk to you a little bit about our long-range transportation plan, which is a product that we produce every five years, and it impacts all nine regions of our jurisdiction, all nine jurisdictions of our region, including New Kent County. I wanted to come here tonight to ask for your help in sharing this information with your constituents. And I am looking for participation from all the residents of the region to make sure that the plan that we're putting together represents everyone and looks at regional projects that make sense for the entire region. So I'm going to just take a few minutes of your time tonight to talk about some of the components of the plan and what people can expect, and then wrap up with some ways that people can look for more information and be engaged as we move forward. So before we actually get started, I've been asked to do this by many people. The transportation world has lots of acronyms. And I wanted to clear up some of the ones that are more prevalent in our field. So our TPO is Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization. That's the board that I serve and Ms. Page sits on. The Central Virginia Transportation Authority, the CBTA, is a new organization, a new authority that was established in the 2020 General Assembly. And it's exciting for us because it actually has the opportunity to allocate funding to make transportation projects come true. So in the past, we've been able to come up with plans and ideas. And now with the CBTA, there are lots of resources available to actually implement transportation improvements throughout the region. So it's a great thing. The TPO has two advisory committees, our Technical Advisory Committee, the TAC, and our Community Transportation Advisory Committee, the CTAC. The Community Transportation Advisory Committee has members from all walks of life, representing many different groups in the region. I believe Ms. Guthrie is a New Kent resident, and she sits on our CTAC. And then two other types of funds that we are able to manage and distribute for eligible projects are the Surface Transportation Block Grant, STBG, and the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality, CMAC. And I may reference those later. So the plan itself follows a typical planning process. New Kent has a comprehensive plan, and it's a very similar process to that. You want to find out what the problems are. You want to come up with possible solutions. You want to test those solutions and see if they work. And then you want to provide recommendations on the best way to move forward. And that's essentially what this does. It's just focused on transportation on a regional scale. So the vision is, again, very similar to a comprehensive plan development. We develop vision, goals, and objectives, and the vision is on the screen here. Equitable opportunities for all people to thrive and live healthy lives, safe connections, promoting a strong economy, and respecting environmental stewardship. And most of what you're seeing on the screen was developed through a fairly robust, COVID-aware, public engagement process. We had lots of different virtual options for people to be engaged with surveys and virtual meetings and lots of other things. So we're proud of the process we followed this past 18 months to get to this point. So there's five different goals that the plan follows: safety, environment and land use, equity and accessibility, economic development, and mobility. And each of these, as you can see, have subsequent objectives and strategies to help meet the needs of the goal. For example, the mobility goal here has, let's see, E3, the third strategy underneath, is improving the system reliability across all modes. We have similar types of detail for each of the goals in the plan. So something that we get asked a lot is, what makes this plan different than other plans? One, it's long range, so we're looking at least 20 years out in the future. So it really deals with big needs and big projects. And two, it's only supposed to look at regionally significant projects. So what makes a project regional? And we divided this out by mode. So transit projects are regional when they have new rights of way, when it's a new project in a new location. When we look at park and ride lots, but the park and ride lots have to be new with 100 spaces or more, or an expansion of 100 spaces or more. So significant expansion of facilities. Bicycle and pedestrian facilities, they have to be part of a multi-jurisdiction network or fill significant gaps in existing network. It has to extend for a long distance and serve a big part of the population. Roads. Lots of roads fall under this category in terms of what's regionally significant, especially when you're looking at adding or removing lanes or changing the use of lanes, developing a new interchange or modification to an interchange. So anything on 64... So anything on 64 would obviously be a regionally significant project. And then major arterial intersection improvements also qualify. Intermodal improvements, where you're looking at different corridors connecting different regional intermodal hubs, like the Merch Marine Terminal, RSC, the major rail yards in the region. And then obviously, major improvements to things like Staples Mill Station or Main Street Station. Bridges, any bridge that's on the National Bridge Inventory and is structurally deficient fills the category for a regionally significant project. So this is what a lot of people resonate with. These are the breakdowns of the different projects that we've identified as part of our plan list. And here, it's divided out by mode. So the first column there is the universal projects. That's essentially any project that we found qualifies as a regionally significant project. The cost possible projects is the second column, and those are projects that we can reasonably pay for over the time period, the timeline, the life of the plan. So as you can see, 33 out of the 34 bicycle and pedestrian projects we can pay for. 147 out of the 184 highway projects we can pay for, about 80% of the projects. And then breakdown in terms of cost. As you can imagine, highway costs are way more expensive than any other mode because of the nature of the construction. It's lots of bricks and mortar. It's lots of right-of-way costs and other types of things. So 84% of all of the project costs are captured in the highway category. So the next steps, and timely opportunity to be with you tonight. Starting August 16th is our final public review period, and it will last for 30 days until September 15th. We are scheduled to, for our policy board, to take up the plan on October 4th and take action to approve it, hopefully. Following adoption, we envision regular updates, especially as CBTA funds allow for projects to be taken off the list. And then we'll immediately start working on our next plan cycle, which would be our 2050 plan for five years in the future. So ways that people can get involved, starting August 16th, which will be next Monday. I would encourage people to go to connectrva2045.org to review the draft plan. We are scheduling in-person open houses, as well as virtual office hours and other ways for people to be engaged from the comforts of their home or their office. And those will be advertised in lots of different ways through that 30-day public review period. We have a website that's listed there under Item 1. We can, people can submit comments on the website. And I would ask to also engage with elected officials and city county staff. So Ms. Le Duke and Ms. Page are key parts of our team and know just as much as I do, I would wager. And I would encourage you to engage with them as well if there are any other questions. With that, I thank you for your time, and I would be happy to entertain any questions if there's time for that.
Thank you. Anyone having comments or questions?
So when do we start paving 64 for that third lane?
The, I will say, and I looked this up when I came in the room tonight. The section from exit 205 to 211 is estimated at about $255 million, and it is in the plan. It's in the out years of the plan, so probably in the 10, 15 years, depending on how CBTA funds and others go. But it is in the plan, so that says a lot. Lots of times, when you're looking at federal money, when you're looking for congressional help, the first step, thing I ask is, is it in the long-range plan? So having it in there is a big door opener for other funding opportunities.
Anyone else?
So, Mr. Parsons, now you see that when I drive seven times a month where I'm coming from, and so every month he hears about I-64, somebody brings it up, just like Mr. Lockwood, and I can't resist the comment about it. We do have a meeting here, we're trying to meet September 8th with Secretary of Transportation about I-64, as well as, as well as some of our major concerns here in New Kent County. We have had several residents that have, I saw their comments on our update for Connect 2045. So, and the way that I did it was to send it to constituents and ask, and tell them that this is your voice for our long-range plan, and so we've had several to make comments on that. I can say that Mr. Parsons came to Plan RVA and TPO Director, and then shortly after that was thrown into Central Virginia Transportation Authority Director and is doing a fantastic job. And I know this plan has been going on for quite a while. So we thank you for being here tonight for your presentation. I will give everybody your contact information so they can reach you, sir.
Ms. Page, as you know, anything we can do to help, I'm ready for it, so thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We can't go to the public hearings yet. Elected officials reports, we'll jump to those before 7:00. Ms. Steers?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report tonight.
Ms. Tiller?
About tonight, thank you.
Mr. Lockwood? Ms. Page?
I'm going to shock everybody. I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
I do see the sheriff out there, and all of us, all the board members were at the national night out last Wednesday. And I just want to thank you for putting on a great, great show. I guess it was a nice show, but all your officers were out there. Parks and Rec did a good job being part of the community, the community coming out there, getting involved, being with your department. And I'd just like to thank my fellow board members for being out there, being part of the community. Fire chief in his department as well. Staff reports?
I have two things. First, Ms. Page just mentioned, she forwarded me information on Friday regarding a meeting request from Congressman Whitman that would like to meet with the board and Secretary of Transportation on September 8th, looking at a 3 o'clock meeting. If you guys could look at your schedule and get back to me on that, I'll also forward an email to you as well. But again, that is September 8th from 3:00 to 5:00. I believe Congressman Whitman will be meeting in person, and the Secretary of Transportation. We're not sure if that's going to be virtual or in person at this point.
That's right. Before our board meeting, so he'll be here?
Yes, right here.
So he's going to be there either way? So if we can be here, we need to be here. Everybody okay with that? 3:00? 3:00 to 5:00? 6:00. Get to overtime that day.
We can push that back.
We probably can reschedule the meeting. I initially had a meeting with Congressman Whitman, and so he said he would set up a meeting with Secretary of Transportation. And so I told him that here in New Kent is a team effort. And so if we were having a meeting, including the Secretary of Transportation, that my fellow board members absolutely want to weigh in, and I would want their input. And so that was the availability that he sent for this date, but if we cannot, we can change that date. I know Secretary Valentine, I think is going to be in DC, so.
You going to try to push it back maybe an hour?
Okay.
Would that be better for? Or is that?
That's fine.
Or another day if you want to.
I'm fine with that. Let's see what you can do if you can, if you can.
Okay. The other item I have, you have a sheet before you. The top page says motion, and this is just for consideration. At your previous meeting, you discussed changing the time for public hearings from 7:00 to 6:30. If you'd like to do that, there is a motion before you now. This motion is only to consider an amendment, which the second page shows the amendment to Article 6, Section A of your bylaws, and it simply strikes the 7:00 PM public hearing start time and adds 6:30 PM. Today, you can only vote to consider it at a future meeting. We have to wait 30 days before you can actually adopt the amendment to the bylaws, if you choose to change the time of your public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. I really don't have a whole lot of dog in this fight, so whatever the board wants to do.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I know a lot of times we have extra time left over, but that's us. And I think maybe we should be more considerate of the citizens. And I think I said something to you today, is that a 7 o'clock public hearing is probably more convenient for our citizens, because a lot of them get off work till 5:00. Some come from Richmond, Williamsburg. You know, by the time they stop by the house to get a bite, either something come, we might, we might want to leave it at 7:00. It doesn't really matter to me. It really doesn't matter.
No, I just think that I agree with Mr. Steers, but at the same time, you know, it's, we end up with several times where we're kind of breaking a meeting just waiting for 7:00 to roll around. And I think that the half an hour is a good compromise to be able to kind of keep the meeting moving along, especially on those days where Ms. Page doesn't have anything. I know that doesn't happen very often, but it might be convenient to keep the meeting moving along on those days. I kind of like the idea of 6:30, and I think that gives everybody enough time to get here for the meeting, so.
I guess the only thing, I just listened to both of you all talk. If we have a lot of presentations, a lot of business, if they, if we start the public hearings at 6:30 and we don't get through the presentation till 7:00, we'd have all those people sitting there for hours. So you might fire them up even more because.
Well, you're under the assumption that they're going to get fired up. They might be here for praise.
But I do know, I mean, because we always can do appointments and everything, you know. So most time, I mean, over my years, we haven't been there. Most time, 7:00 is.
What time is it?
7:00 now.
And, Mr. Chairman, just recently, I had a couple people compliment the board on when we do have a 10-minute or 15-minute break before the public hearing, how we come out and talk to them and make them feel at home. So that's also another point.
Just leave. All right, let's get through, do you have other business? All right, let's do appointments while we're here. District 2?
I have one for the regional boards and commissions.
This is for the, let's do the, I'm sorry. Not appropriate by the, by districts. Sorry about that. District 3? District 4?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Bobby Wegley as District 4 Representative to the Board of Road Viewers to serve a two-year term, beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Steers. District 5?
Not any. Ready to go.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on appointments delegated by district?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Appointments not delegated by district.
No, sir.
Anybody have any? All right. Appointment to the regional boards and commissions? Ms. Tiller, you said you had one?
I do. I move to appoint Kimberly Moyer as District 2 Representative to the Heritage Public Library Board of Trustees to serve a four-year term ending June 30, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. I'm sorry, it's after 7:00, we can go into our public hearing. Item 3, the first public hearing has been withdrawn. Item 4, public hearing ordinance O-27-21, use of golf carts and utility vehicles in the Deer Lake subdivision. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you, you have ordinance O-27-21, which is an application from the Deer Lake Homeowners Association requesting authorization for the use of golf carts and utility vehicles on streets within that subdivision. And they're requesting authorization for all the streets within the Deer Lake subdivision. Their request has been reviewed by VDOT, and VDOT has approved their request. So with authorization from you today, the next step would be for the homeowners association to install the signage. And once signage is installed, then these carts could be utilized. I do want to point out, in the ordinance that you have before you, in order to authorize golf carts, we do have to amend the county code, Section 70-192. The language is different than the previous two that you've already approved in that I did not include a two-year review cycle with the proposed language that you have before you. And the reason for that is, the Board of Supervisors can review this at any time and can change their authorization at any time as well. So we don't have to wait to two years. If you start getting complaints, we can review it immediately and schedule a public hearing if need be to change that. Also want to bring to your attention that the two previous subdivisions that you've approved for Chickahominy Shores and Patriots Landing, those reviews will come up at your next meeting. And I would propose that we not include another two-year cycle review when we adopt that language at our next meeting as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hathaway? So it stops at, Bob Cuntzer, like Bushnell Drive, is that not 25 through there?
That's Rochambeau.
That's Rochambeau, okay. So how are you going to keep people from going back and forth from Rochambeau to Deer Lake?
Well, it's.
I know you love this ordinance right here. Crystal will be there, watching out. Have those roads been taken over by the state in Rochambeau yet?
Don't think all of them have. I'm not sure.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway? If none, I hear none, I'll open the public hearing. No one signed up. I'll close the public hearing anymore. Back it up for comments or questions for board members.
Have we heard comments on how it's working at Chickahominy? Have, have we heard comments on how it's working at Chickahominy Shores and Patriot Landing, or will we just sit there doing the review? Or did you want to just call me about this?
I will defer to the sheriff on that one. As far as comments on how it's been working in the other two neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
We continue to get complaints in both of the existing approved neighborhoods. We have, to my knowledge, not written many summonses for these violations, trying to use education, but also trying not to draw youngsters into the criminal justice system as the majority of them are underage drivers. I had one personally that I followed back to the house and had a long talk with mom, and then the, the mother of the other person owned the golf cart at that time, and were promised that it would never happen again, and they were promised that if it did, and I was the one, it would never happen again. So we do have some issues. We have used social media to put the information out there as far as the requirements necessary. We continue to have underage drivers, we continue to have no slow-moving vehicle signs, we continue to have individuals who are not properly licensed and accredited through DMV in Virginia operating the golf carts, and more to be discussed at the review time for the other two. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Hathaway, so we're gonna be reviewing the other two next month, is that what I heard, or next meeting?
Although Chickahominy Shores actually expires next month, Patriots Landing expires the following month. Since we do have to schedule a public hearing as part of the review, I would like to do them both at one time.
Maybe we should have a member from each of those organizations, those homeowners or whatever, come to the meeting, as well as somebody for this. I mean, I'd, I'm surprised nobody from the neighborhood is here to represent it. Oh, okay.
Right, we do.
Or, or didn't plan to speak on it. I mean, it is concerning if we've got a bunch of kids driving golf carts around, because the rules are that you're supposed to be a licensed driver, you know? I'm, I'd almost rather have kids than drunks, but, you know, it's, it's concerning if, if the sheriff is having issue with both of the current neighborhoods, that kids are driving golf carts and, and gators and stuff down the road, knowing what the rules are, and also if, especially if the signage isn't being put up and maintained properly, so. I don't know, I mean, if it's an ongoing problem, are we gonna create a larger ongoing problem?
Well, I think we always have the authority to, to approve it, we can, if it's some issue, take it back. There's no timeframe on that, right? I mean, we could have a public hearing, we can call for a public hearing, and we can rescind the application, right?
Yes, can.
But I do think it's, it probably would be a good idea if somebody does, when we review them, does, ask somebody from those organizations to come speak.
And maybe somebody, you know, maybe we delay this one till next month and have all three of them done at the same time, and just get some, get some feedback and commitment to, you know, all three parties, that signage and enforcement is, I mean, it, it should fall on them first. I mean, we would, the sheriff should come out when there's a real problem, you know, not trying to get things that mom and dad should be doing, keeping the kids off the road, so.
Sure. I believe all three neighborhoods have active homeowners associations, and the HOAs were the ones that submitted the applications, so I can definitely reach out to all three HOAs.
Yes, that's up to the board, I don't have any, I don't have any problems voting on this this evening, because we can review it anytime, but it's, what a pleasure the board is.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Lockwood's correct, I think there should be a representative from each one here next month, if we're gonna delay this one, so the sheriff can maybe reiterate his issues with the young drivers or whatever, so. And maybe if they hear it in public and it's there, they'll pay attention.
Do you want to speak on behalf of the HOA?
Hi, Dan.
Come, come on up.
Come on up.
I apologize, everybody else was out of town and they sent me.
All right.
I am part of the HOA, and I can tell you that we did put it out for a vote in the neighborhood. It was like, I'd have to pull my email up, it was sixty percent for, maybe thirty percent against, and we had the vote out for two months through social media and our neighborhood's website. So the majority of the neighborhood does want to have the golf carts. We are aware of putting the signs up and maintaining the signs. In my experience, when the, when the first started with the golf carts in the neighborhood, there were quite a few children, younger people driving them. However, recently I have not seen young kids driving them, it's mostly adults going from one kid, one house to another to visit friends, or taking their young children for a ride in the evening to the, around the neighborhood.
I'm, I'm just curious, when you, when you kind of started this campaign to, to get it going, was, were the laws and rules kind of clearly stated so that people understood that kids should not be riding?
I don't, you know, I'm not sure if people understood at that time.
Yeah.
But since people started talking about it, yes, it's been made very clear to everyone in the neighborhood that you have to be a legal driver.
Right.
And the golf carts have to be, you know, have the turn signals and all that stuff on them.
Okay.
So yes, that's been made clear to the neighborhood.
Okay.
They got hit in shorts, too.
Yes.
Yes, correct, yeah.
And I guess with the HOA, come back anytime you could ask for a vote, and if you wanted it, if it went the other way, I guess you could put another application into the board to rescind it, or probably wouldn't even need an application for that, right? Just say they want to take it out, and it's a HOA. I guess we have to rescind it.
Yeah, um, we would recommend that.
Or to take it away.
We would bring it up for a public hearing, because we would have to amend it, so we would have to go public.
I'm fine with moving forward with it if you, if you'd like, I mean.
They're still gonna be driving golf carts into Deer Lake, I know.
I know, so, you know, I just would like to make sure that they, you know, if this thing rolls out, that everybody in the neighborhood's informed, so that, you know, when the sheriff does come out, it might not just be a courtesy call to remind you of the rules.
Okay. Whatever the pleasure of the board.
She said she's, she's on here.
So what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm with Mr. Lockwood if you want to vote, since she spoke, they seem to be aware.
So whoever.
Well, just to make the peace, Mr. Chairman, well, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-seven dash twenty-one, authorizing the use of golf carts and utility vehicles in the Deer Lake subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Any other board members have any comments? Business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to say, the Proclaiming Grace had our Jenna Bash telethon this past weekend, and despite the rain, it was a great success, and I would like to thank our fine sheriff and Deputy Lee Bailey for contributing to the video that took place in that as well. It was a, a lot of fun, and we had a good time and raised a lot of money, so thank you for the continued support from the community.
Great. All right. There's no other business. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at six PM on Wednesday, September eighth, twenty twenty-one, and the next work session will be held at nine AM on Wednesday, September twenty, twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. And I guess we're gonna have, the September eighth meeting will start at four o'clock. All right, we'll start at three, could be pushed back. Both in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, the board will also participate in a joint meeting with the Planning Commission at six-thirty on Monday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. There will be no August work session. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Adjourned.